You can, can you all hear me okay?
Just, just speak loud and, and it's, it works out fine.
Okay, super. All right, Hans, we're gonna just say a few words to introduce and then I'll go to the, once we start.
Well, yes, uh, so thank you so much for, for joining us. Uh, I see we, we have, um, about sixteen attendees right now in addition to, uh, city staff that is participating today. This is the first of two public outreach meetings. Uh, we are holding one today and we are holding another one on Thursday, uh, in the evening from seven to eight thirty. Um, the idea behind those two public outreach meetings is to, to start a, a discussion, uh, with, uh, interested parties that range from neighbors to businesses to commercial retail operators to other stakeholders about the potential of, uh, proposing, uh, ordinances that would allow, uh, commercial retail operations in the city of Monterey. And what we, uh, created, uh, and that will, will show this in a little bit more detail in a very brief presentation after I speak. Uh, a process which we think will allow everyone to chime in. Uh, more importantly, there will be also, uh, certain stops in the process that allows us to check in again with the city council, the decision makers, and update them about the, uh, information that we are getting through this public process. What we will also do is by the end of this week, uh, we are sending out a paper survey to every single household in Monterey to also learn from them what they think about, uh, the rollout of commercial cannabis. And of course, we have launched a, a interactive software platform, Have Your Say Monterey dot O R G that also solicits input and also publishes a lot of the information that we are getting from the commercial operators sent to us, but also other input that, that we deem important to share with the public. So today is, is your opportunity to speak. We will keep our remarks to the bare minimum. Um, we, uh, we have a brief presentation for you that should not take longer than ten minutes, but it basically updates you about what we have done so far. And, uh, with that, I punted over to our assistant city manager, Ned Rosha Nasatira.
Great. Uh, thank you so much, Hans. Appreciate, uh, introduction and we'll do our best to keep this, uh, keep this brief. And provide an overview of, uh, of the topic today and, uh, cannabis policy, some of our objectives. Uh, as, as we've shared with council as part of our roadmap is to establish a process for permitting and regulating commercial cannabis operations here in the city. And our goal is to, uh, to, we always say, do it right the first time and have a planned process, a deliberate process that gets feedback from the community. Um, we will, as staff, draft a proposed ordinance for final approval by council if there's enough support for us to trigger, uh, doing so. And we know that, uh, the goal is to provide a solution that is based on best practices, is reflective of input that we receive from a number of stakeholders ranging from neighbors, business districts, consultants, perspective, cannabis operators and, and the city council as well. Go to, uh, next slide here. Uh, as we look for public input, we appreciate all of you being here for the virtual town hall. Uh, the stakeholders who may be here, I saw the list of, I think we have twenty-eight people who've been able to join us so far this morning. Uh, is our, our council members, of course, the policymakers who will be checking in with on a regular basis. Uh, residents, neighborhood associations, business associations where these retail operations may, uh, may be held or may be placed, uh, commercial cannabis operators, feedback from those groups. And we look to receive feedback from the community through a number of mechanisms. We have the virtual town hall today as Hans mentioned, and one on Thursday evening as well. We've also launched a new online portal called Have Your Say Monterey, and this is where members of the public, whether you're a resident or a business owner, can, uh, can log in and give, uh, feedback, learn more about the topic. And also, we've launched a comprehensive online survey through that portal as well. Also, if you're a voter in the city of Monterey or a registered voter in Monterey, uh, this weekend, either on Saturday or on Monday, you should be receiving an informational flyer from the city along with a tear-off postcard that will allow you through business reply mail to, uh, take a quick eight-question survey, drop it in the mail, postage-free, and we'll tally up the results and gather feedback, uh, from voters that way as well. All of this, the town halls, the online portal, and the postcard survey will help us as staff inform our policymakers about how our stakeholders feel about the very hot topic of cannabis. As we look at revenues and questions that people often ask us, well, how much money, uh, would come in as a result of cannabis? And the latest analysis is that revenues could range anywhere on the low end, uh, to be four hundred thousand dollars to the high end at one point four million dollars annually. And where would the money go? And the feedback has been mixed. We have, uh, council member Williamson has expressed an interest in uh, the funding to go towards housing programs and rental assistance and social justice issues. Council member Hafa has said, uh, that, uh, potentially, uh, those efforts and maybe homeless and social service providers and city services. Our staff, uh, have, have shared that, uh, due to the economic downturn and results of COVID- nineteen on our economy and on our budget, uh, we've had to, uh, cut significantly our hours at the library and other city services and the funding could help add, help alleviate some of those, uh, budget deficit issues and help, uh, us get back to other service levels. It's important that we all understand and create a common understanding on what the revenues are realistically and what that would result in and how those funds would be used if, in fact, cannabis does move forward here in the city of Monterey. We've outlined, Hans has done a really nice job of putting together the cannabis roadmap and it's a six-step process. We've created a starting point that talks about what this process is and, uh, and what, uh, the whole topic of cannabis is as it relates to events, uh, cannabis, uh, commercial operations, et cetera. Step two is to create a decision point and identify whether or not we've reached consensus. We're still somewhere between step one and two right now. We're at a point where we're, we're seeking feedback and then pretty soon we'll be taking this, uh, this spring to council to make a decision and to identify whether there is consensus around this topic. If there is consensus, that'll trigger us to go into step three, which is to prepare for launch, to develop a policy, adopt a policy, and then step four to launch the cannabis, uh, commercial cannabis operations itself. That's when we would begin to issue permits. Step five, once permits are issued, is to, uh, confirm how are they doing, monitor and regulate cannabis operators within the city. And then, of course, step six, which is an iterative process to review, how does it, how did it go? And do we need to revise and, and make any adjustments to the policy moving forward? So this step, six-step process is a roadmap to how do we go about implementing cannabis if there's support behind it here in the community? It's important that we figure out what that community consensus is. If there's widespread support, it's, it's likely the council will move forward and advance it. If the reaction is split fifty-fifty, that'll be another decision that council will have to make and, and either way, we'll be sharing with council what the feedback is based on surveys, based on these town hall meetings, as well as the print survey that is going out to voters in the city. It's important that we all respect the varying feedback, both pros and cons, uh, about the topic of cannabis, assess that feedback and then come to conclusions based on that. And then going back to how do we define community consensus? The, ideally, we would find a solution that everyone can live with, both the residents, neighbors, business associations, but give ourselves sufficient time to make those decisions. And that's one of the reasons why we've developed this comprehensive roadmap and, uh, have taken the time to put together these events like a town hall meeting. It's important that we address everyone's concerns and also do it in a manner that's thoughtful and engaged and doesn't only rely on digital engagement efforts, but also on face-to-face communications and other ways that we gather feedback from our community. We realize that not everyone has internet access, so, uh, while it's a privilege for all of us to be here with this town hall, getting feedback on paper through the postcard mailer is another mechanism by which we engage with the public. That concludes our overview and, uh, we're gonna hand it back to Hans to give any other initial comments before we gather feedback from you, the community members, or answer any questions that you might have. Hopefully, I stay within the ten minutes.
Yes, thank you, Ned. Uh, great job. The, um, again, um, the, the, the process that we have designed is, is really based on trying to get as much feedback as we can, given also our COVID-nineteen restrictions. Uh, a lot of our traditional means of meeting with groups, face-to-face meetings, um, are kind of, uh, difficult to, to conduct right now. And so we, we're trying to, to use as much as we can of this medium, the virtual medium, to interact, but also go, uh, the route down with traditional mediums, answering phone calls or, uh, sending out the, 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 the surveys, encouraging people to interact with that, with us one way or another. At the end, uh, you, you saw the slide where, where we had the, the, the decision matrix, uh, shown to you. There can be very well an outcome that basically says we are not going forward based on the feedback we have received. There can be, uh, um, uh, also the, 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 the feedback, let, yeah, let's go forward. Everyone appears to be, uh, happy. You don't have to look far when, when you look at, at the neighboring communities, uh, where, where sometimes the, uh, implementation went sideways because not everyone felt that they were heard and not everyone felt that the council was paying, uh, attention to them. We try to avoid all that. So the process that we have started, uh, the outcome will be determined by, by the will of the community as well, as well, of course, the will of the city council who have all to, the ultimate say about, uh, how they would like to proceed. And with that, um, I hand it over to Ned and, uh, ask Ned to, to, uh, facilitate our hopefully lively discussion. I see we have about twenty attendees right now. Um, and, uh, I really encourage you guys to speak. We will have no time limitations on, uh, on, on your, um, uh, contributions. However, I really ask you to, to not go into a, a long, uh, uh, presentation of what your company is doing or what your thoughts are. Please be respectful that others might wanna also chime in and, uh, we are dependent on making sure that everyone gets his say. So with that, Ned, I punted back to you.
Super. Well, our first person is, and it's hard to raise your hand, uh, if you've been able to, uh, join us, there should be a button at the bottom of your screen that is raised, that is raise hand, uh, button. Just click that and we'll call on you. Our first person who's, has their hand raised is Nancy Soulay. Hopefully, I've pronounced your name correctly. And if you could unmute yourself, uh, good morning and welcome.
I'm unmuting. I don't know if you can see me or if it's just, um, audio.
Audio only, but we're glad to have you here.
That's fine. Probably better. Um, my concerns would be that having it in downtown Alvarado, if smoking was allowed, any type of smoking of it would be allowed, that in, that infringes on other people's rights, just as as smoking of cigarettes would in a restaurant or in a house, uh, where you did not want to have the smoke infiltrate. Uh, I was walking down Lighthouse in Pacific Grove recently, a week or so ago, and you could smell the cannabis. Um, and, and that's just walking. It, it shouldn't be there, particularly when there's a lot of offices upstairs from businesses. There are residences upstairs from businesses. We, the public, should be allowed to walk the streets and to be able to be in restaurants and eat without smelling cannabis. So from that point of view, I would say, uh, if you had to have it, could you at least not make it allowable to smoke anywhere there, just like with cigarettes? But I prefer that in any case, that if you had to have it, and I, I personally have never used it, don't intend to ever use it, although I support it for medical marijuana. Um, uh, so I wouldn't rule that part out if I needed it. But, um, if you had it in the industrial area where there were not residences around, it doesn't impact the children, it doesn't impact the, um, residences and the community as much. So my preference would be to keep it out of the business areas, out of residential areas and into industrial areas if you have to have it. But I'd like to also hear from the police. I'd like to know whether it is a detriment to, um, having seen more crime, seeing more, um, accidents from it. I imagine it's somewhat like alcohol if you use it irresponsibly, but I don't know that.
Thanks, Nancy. I, I don't know if this is a good time to ask Dave to, or, uh, Chief Hooper or Sergeant Gabe Castor, who are both here representing the police department to, to respond and.
Sure. I, I gladly respond. I, I would just answer that at this time, really, I think the purpose is for us to listen to the community. We have and are working on gathering different statistics. I've reported out in previous council meetings, uh, some of the issues surrounding the various, uh, deals, but I, I don't really wanna get into that now because I think it's more appropriate for us to do that in front of the whole council, uh, in regard to any concerns there might be in, in, in regard to policing issues. I, I think it's more appropriate that we kinda listen to what the community says now. And, and then, like I said, we're, we're gathering that information and we'll certainly share that with the entire council.
Okay, great. Thank you, Dave. Uh, and we do wanna hear from, uh, from our, those who are here. So we, we do have, uh, twenty people, uh, here, uh, who are attendees. No other hands raised so far, so please, we encourage you to, to raise your hand. Uh, we do have one question that came in. Will any proposed ordinance be reviewed by the planning commission? And, uh, it's a, it's a question from Luke Coletti, and I, I think, uh, I don't know if, uh, Kim Cole could respond to that briefly, uh, if that's appropriate, or, or maybe we can, uh, get to that, uh, in a moment.
Provide a quick response.
Okay.
Um, any proposed regulation that will be included in the zoning ordinance will have to be reviewed in a public hearing process with the planning commission. If the regulations are not incorporated into the zoning ordinance and maybe they're more of a nuisance regulation or something like that, that does not require a planning commission, public hearing.
Great. Thanks, Kim. Okay, and thank you, Nancy Soulay, for, for joining us and for your comments. Okay, uh, our next, uh, person here is, uh, Jean Rico Carr, and, uh, if you could unmute yourself, welcome.
Hello, um, my name's Jean Rico Carr. Um, I was involved before with the, the My Caregiver project that was down on Lighthouse about a decade ago. Um, I kinda just wanted to get on and, and speak a few things. Um, I wanted to ask about if there's gonna be a possibility that there is gonna be a social equity program. I know that there's a lot of funding that comes from the government right now and from B C C, um, for, uh, projects that are licensed as social equity programs. So that's one thing that I wanted to definitely recommend or, or kinda bring up to the, to the city and, um, as you guys move forward. Uh, one of the other things that I wanted to bring up was, um, that as far as to touch on, I mean, I don't know if we're able to touch on what other people have said, but, um, in being in the business districts and stuff like that, I mean, the, the smoking, um, as far as I know, you're not supposed to be able to smoke inside of dispensaries right now. Um, it's not allowed. So, um, and as far as controlling people that are outside of a dispensary, um, I mean, I'm sure if, if it's a properly ran dispensary, they're gonna do their best to try to recommend that their membership doesn't, uh, smoke around or near the, uh, dispensary, but, um, it may still happen. And I mean, I know, I definitely, um, as somebody who was an operator of a dispensary, do, um, apologize to people in the community that, that does happen. Um, but, uh, I know that our focus, uh, moving forward, cause I'm, I'm hoping to be a prospective applicant, um, to open up a place in the city of Monterey. Um, I would definitely work with the community and always have an open line to people to be able to, uh, reach out to me, um, and, and, you know, contact with me. When we previously ran our project before, um, we did have an open door, even though I know there was a lot of issues and things like that. Um, and I, I don't, don't wanna go too deep into it, cause I know we're dealing with more of the regulations and stuff like that as we go forward, but, um, I just wanted to introduce myself to everybody. I also wanted to congratulate you guys on your process that you guys have put together. Definitely a different process from everywhere that I've seen so far. And, um, I think it's really good that you guys are taking the time to, um, have these types of forums and, and reach and allowing for the public and everybody to be able to be involved, um, versus just, you know, doing something kind of behind the scenes type of a thing. So, um, I just, again, wanted to introduce myself. My name's Jean Rico Carr. Um, you guys can find me on social media, anything like that, and I'm always open to talk to you guys and, and give you guys my experiences and, um, and, you know, anything in, of that nature. I've been a, an advocate of medical cannabis for, since two thousand and two. So, um, you know, if I can ever help out with the medical aspect, um, I, you know, definitely feel free to reach out to me, please.
Great. Thank you, uh, Mr. Carr, for calling in and giving us your feedback. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, uh, let's, let's see, we've got, um, feel free, again, just a reminder to those attending, raise your hand virtually by pressing that, uh, that raise hand button. We have a question that's, uh, come in here from Christina Burrell, Burwell, I'm sorry. Uh, she states, if it does pass, which I hope it does, are you taking notes on how Seaside rolled out their cannabis ordinances? Has there been a study about if Seaside has been successful or not? So, good question.
Yes, I can answer that. We, we are following, uh, Seaside, so we have followed Seaside's rollout. And, uh, there has not been a study per se whether Seaside was successful or not, but, uh, we, uh, we have followed Seaside's rollout and, and, uh, uh, have our contacts over there as well. And, uh, it certainly is, uh, is a regional, um, example of how they did it. And, uh, we are taking the, the lessons learned that they have very much to heart as well, as well as looking at their successes. So, yes, um, uh, that was part of our homework that we, uh, connected with, uh, staff of the city of Seaside as well.
Thanks, Christina, for that question. And for those who have called in, if you're not familiar on Zoom, please dial star nine to virtually raise your hand and then we can call on you as well, since, uh, you're not on the Zoom app. But, uh, we don't have any other raised hands, so.
There you go.
We have a few. We got Robert Roach. Uh, let's hear from Robert.
Hi, thank you. I like to say this is a great process you have. Um, I wish there was more participation. I'm the executive director of the Monterey County Cannabis Industry Association. And I have a, a long career in regulatory, uh, in regulatory enforcement. I was around when they crafted some regulations at the county. And, I mean, I, I, I like what the last speaker says. You're trying to learn what people have done before. Cause when people were drafting the regulations, people were kind of copying from here and from there. And, um, you know, now you can take the best examples, cause I could tell you that different cities and different counties have taken different approaches. And the most successful approaches are the ones that don't just apply your existing program to the cannabis industry, but to look at it as a special situation and craft the best solution to it. So try and learn from others. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Robert. Let's hear from RM Stoney. RM.
Yeah, hi there. Thanks for, thanks for conducting this meeting. Um, I will say that I, I am an owner of a dispensary here in Carmel. Um, so, uh, was actually one of the first in, in Monterey County to, to get a license. But, uh, you know, a few questions I have really go around, you know, how many permits are, are you guys thinking about? Um, you know, have you narrowed down the locations along the corridors? You know, Lighthouse, obviously. One lady brought up Alvarado, a lot of different corridors. And, and also, you know, are you considering other permit types that would kind of branch out to the Ryan Ranch area? You know, things like manufacturing and cultivation and distribution, which if you're looking at this from a revenue standpoint, I think that, uh, that might be something that you wanna look at that, that puts it out on the outskirts and, and, uh, can, can provide other sources. I'm also kinda touching on, on the last, uh, speaker there. You know, you guys are doing this in, in a great way, reaching out to the community, I think is super important, uh, understanding the wants and needs, uh, but also reaching out to the operators to get, you know, to get a true account of, of what it's like, uh, to, to operate a dispensary, what, you know, how it is, you know, how we interact, you know, here we're in, in incorporated Monterey County, so our interactions are with the, uh, the sheriff department, you know, what that looks like and, and really just, uh, get an overall sense of, of doing it right and, and kind of dispelling some of the, uh, the myths that are out there that surround our business and, and, uh, you know, let us help you along the path. So, that's all I have for the moment, but, uh, again, thank you for, for conducting this meeting and available if you have any, uh, wanna reach out to us.
So, so RM, this is Hans. Thank you so much. Uh, of course, I need to ask you, is, is this your, your stage name, Stoney?
I, you know, it's, it's, it just, I was, uh, you know, just meant to be, I guess, but no, that's, it's on my driver's license and, uh, that's, that's been the, uh, the running joke for, for my attendance all through school, but yes.
RM, I, I think your, your, your fate was laid by your last name, so I, I, I'm happy that, that it was legalized. So you have a legalized business in Carmel, so. Um, so, but, uh, go, go back. Uh, I wanna respond to your questions. We don't know yet how many licenses we will issue for the city of Monterey. That depends on, on various factors. One factor for sure is, is, uh, what our residents are telling us and our businesses, as you said, as you said also. Uh, and one, you said one could be at Lighthouse, one could be downtown. That's all up for grabs right now. Um, and, and so we are, uh, getting our arms around those questions right now. So, um, we really do not have a notion of how many licenses. And the second part that I, uh, that I mentioned to you also, it depends on the other variable that this is how many licenses can the market actually absorb? Um, when, when you look at the, the, uh, the Monterey Peninsula market, uh, we have right now thirteen dispensaries operating, I believe, on the Monterey dispensary market. And the market is oversaturated right now with dispensaries. When you just look at the, at the normal economics that, that people apply towards, uh, when a dispensary is, uh, profitable or, uh, when we just have too many dispensaries. So, having said that, Monterey is, is of course a tourist destination. And, uh, with that, uh, some of the dispensaries, uh, if they are located in in strategic locations, uh, might be able to attract additional customer base. But for the pure Monterey market of hundred, one thousand residents on the Monterey Peninsula with, I believe, thirteen dispensaries on the peninsula, we, we, we are, um, uh, pretty saturated. Having said that, uh, uh, I, I return, we are reaching out, we are doing our, our analysis, our study, what the market can absorb, where. And, uh, at, at the appropriate time, probably jointly, you will all discover with us, uh, what, what the number of future permits, if we go there, what that number will be.
Yes, thank you. I, I think you bring up a great point about the oversaturation, and I don't think many municipalities have actually considered that moving forward. And as one of those thirteen, uh, I, you know, I just wanna commend you and thank you for taking that into consideration, cause we really, uh, you know, we're all just in, here to, you know, do it for a lot of different reasons, but we wanna stay in business as well, so.
Yep.
Great. Thank you, RM, uh, for. Getting a lot of messages there. Okay, so we're going to, uh, go to the next caller here, Sal Palma. Sal.
Yeah. Hi, everyone. How you doing? Uh, thanks for the introduction. My name is Sal Palma. I'm the owner of Higher Level of Care in Seaside across the street from Embassy Suites, uh, on Canyon Del Ray. We also have a location operational up in the city of Hollister, a new location that's gonna be opening in the city of Greenfield in March of this year. Um, additionally, I sit on the, uh, the board of directors with the Monterey County Cannabis Industry Association, uh, with Mr. Roach, who spoke earlier and just really wanted to touch on a couple of things that were brought up previously. Um, as, as far as the onsite smoking, uh, we, we don't allow smoking at or around, uh, any of our facilities or consumption of any type, uh, for that matter, whether it's, uh, edible or otherwise. Uh, we do have security staff that patrols the area and we do have a, a good relationship with, with all of our neighbors and it's a kind of a special situation. We're in, over in Seaside where we actually share a property line with residential. Um, and still we've been able to operate in such a way that, um, we haven't had any security issues or really any, any nuisance issues at all. Um, to touch on the, uh, the tax, um, just as kind of a point of reference, uh, last year in twenty twenty, we generated eight hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars uh, for the city of Seaside from our single location. So I think that those numbers that were cited earlier are definitely attainable, uh, you know, depending on how many locations are actually, uh, decided to be allowed to operate. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you for joining us, Sal. Uh, next caller is Zoe Carter. Hi, Zoe. Good morning.
Hi, good morning. Thank you for having me.
Hi, good morning. Thank you for having me. I just want to put a few comments in here that I don't think I've heard yet. And many of you all know that I've been very supportive of this, and I think it's important to note that the stigma of cannabis in the past is not what it is now. And many people use it for additional causes, many people use it for a other number of reasons. And when dispensaries go in to communities, they, number one, make huge upgrades to their facilities and make buildings nicer than they were to begin with. And I think that that's something of note that hasn't been said yet. And to be honest, buildings that these could potentially go and could use that help in our community. And I think that the security and what they do to make sure that their buildings are safe and the neighborhoods around them are, well, not the neighborhoods, but the areas around them are safe is important to note too, and they have their own security and staff there. And to my knowledge, they, the people are supposed to be following all the same smoking laws as normally would have to. So the marijuana smoke should not be an issue, and if people are doing that, that should not be happening. So I think that we need to be talking about this and having conversations and helping people understand that the cannabis stigma is not what it was even 10 years ago or five years ago. And we've come a long way with it. And this is something, you know, it's not a silver bullet, but it is something that could really help our devastated budget right now and bring back our social services and bring back things that really are important to our community. And if this is one of a several number of prongs that can help, I think it's something that we seriously need to consider, among other things that can help our devastated budget that nobody could have predicted with COVID-19. Thank you.
Thank you, Zoe. Good hearing from you. And let's see, any other questions? Doesn't look like we have anyone else with their hands raised. See if there's any questions in the Q and A. You can always add them into the Q and A field here. Hans?
Yeah, I, I would like to ask our attendees if they have any pre-notions about locations. The one or two speakers already spoke about the Lighthouse Corridor, which of course is one business district. We had another speaker spoke about downtown Monterey around Alvarado Street. Let me, let me ask you, what, what, what do you guys think about Lighthouse Old Town? What do you think about an area that really attracts millions of visitors each year, which is Canary Row? What are your sentiments to operate also in areas that are frequented by, by our visitors? Monterey has annually around four to six million visitors in non-COVID years. So let's hope this, this trend will continue in a couple of months. But where, where would you see, where would you feel, is it appropriate to think about it? Do you, as residents, if we have residents on the call, do you like to say, well, put them in areas where, where it's out of mind, out of sight? Or do you say, well, let's, let's use our capital, quote unquote, that we have to maximize revenue? So these are just a few questions that I have. And I see that the three operators of retail businesses have raised their hand. And of course, we will work it in the order they come in. But I also, if we have residents on the line, please share with me also or with us your, your, your opinion about that as well. And with that, Nat, if you could just work through the raised hands, please?
Yep, absolutely. Great questions posed by Hans. And let's hear from Aram first.
Yeah, no, I think it's a great question. You know, I think a huge consideration really is going to be, you know, kind of fall on you guys on where we can go for those that are applying, you know, you know, park setbacks for one are big. There's a lot of little hidden parks in Monterey that you're not really maybe aware of. If you take the park, just the park at the City Hall, for example. And if you go with the state sort of recommendation, which by the way, cities can choose to reduce the 600-foot setback from parks. If you draw a circle from the corner of that park, you take out half of Alvarado, I think. If you go over into Monterey and you draw some circles around, I think it's off of Lighthouse, like Schultz Park and the park at the end of Canary Row, and you start drawing 600-foot circles around that, you end up taking away, you know, ha- half of that. So, you know, really, we want to be, you know, have you guys take that into consideration and looking at reducing that and opening up the corridors more for one and allowing more, you know, owners of those buildings, I guess, an opportunity to throw their, their building in the ring, if you will. And also, I think like Sal mentioned earlier, you know, we're in the same boat here. We're, you know, near the barnyard, where a lot of businesses, no residential right next to us. But we, you know, great relationships with, with the other businesses in the community. And, and we just want to kind of be treated as any other business and not have too much discrimination thrown at us for where we can go. We understand the concerns with, you know, schools and children and all those things. But, you know, children can't get into our dispensaries. It's highly regulated and highly, you know, protected. But, but really, I think, you know, as Hans is saying, you know, I don't know that there's a bad spot you could be, you know, the more exposure you have to the tourist community coming in, you know, the more likely you are, you know, you're going to have, have a more thriving business. But, you know, as you guys look at the maps, really take into consideration where you're going to allow us to go based on those setbacks and that's going to determine, you know, what we can do. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, setbacks, definitely an important question and consideration as we look at policy. Let's hear from John Rico again.
I just wanted to basically kind of give a little bit of my insight from being, obviously, my caregiver was down on Lighthouse at the point when it was open. And we had a great relationships as well, just like the other gentleman had said about his business in Carmel. We, we had very great relationships with the businesses down there. So I know that they, few businesses might have changed, but a lot of the businesses there were, seemed to be in support of it back a decade ago. So I'm sure hopefully that they're still also in support of that. Being in that little area, though, is, is I think a benefit to the, to Monterey, like having one in that area somewhere. So that way, you're right, the tourism, even though I'm a very big advocate on the medical side of it. But that, if you want to reach out as far as to boost the revenue amount as far as for the city, you probably do want to put at least one in that area. I know at the same time, whenever touching a little bit on what you guys were saying about the saturation, about a lot of them being in the area. I do think it's important that, you know, the city, you know, kind of does think of, you know, spacing them out, though. You know, I mean, that's a big, big issue, I'm sure, too, with even the operators Phil and Seaside, that, you know, when you have places so close to each other, it's like, you know, it's, it's just basically just a market where people are kind of just walking from one place to the other real quick and it, it's, I'm sure it's tough to, to really, you know, allow for, for a business to kind of thrive or kind of be able to assist in, in the revenue situation whenever they're so close to each other like that. So just, you know, in, in thinking of spaces, I mean, the Canary Row Lighthouse area, definitely good for tourism. Ryan Ranch, obviously definitely good for a lot of your medical patients, because there's still a lot of medical people in the medical side of it out there. So, and then as far as Alvarado and downtown, I mean, that's a whole nother section where you got, you still have tourism. And then you also have a lot of, you know, local attendees locally attending those businesses down there. So I mean, I just say, just make sure, or I would like to recommend that you guys kind of, you know, do spread them out, you know, a little bit. But definitely, you know, make it available and, you know, in, in probably all three of those little sections, I would assume, you know. So that's kind of what I would like to recommend, you know, when it comes to that.
Very helpful feedback. Thank you. Let's hear from Sal again. Welcome back, Sal.
Yeah, thank you very much. And, you know, I obviously am a dispensary owner. I'm in the industry. But I was also born and raised in Monterey. My family still owns multiple residential, multifamily residential, commercial properties within the city. So I'm kind of a stakeholder on, on both sides of the fence, really. And, you know, I think that, I think that the city of Monterey could probably absorb three dispensaries if they're put in the right locations, especially just given the transient nature of the economy here. I think that the Lighthouse District, the Old Town Business District in North Fremont are kind of the ideal places for those. I know that a lot of cities have kind of the, the opinion that it should be located in more industrial areas. But at the end of the day, this is a retail business and it should be treated as such. And a lot of our customers are either elderly or disabled or both. So it really creates a lot of transportation issues and inefficiencies for people to have to go out of their way in order to be able to get in, and many times their medicine, if they're having to drive out to the industrial part of towns in order to be able to secure that. So I think that the Monterey, city of Monterey could definitely absorb three. And I think given those three sort of separate business districts, that they would have the potential of all being successful.
So you said Lighthouse, Old Monterey and Canary Row. What, did I get that right?
Lighthouse, well, Lighthouse or Canary Row, but, you know, New Monterey area and Old Town Business District in North Fremont.
Oh, North Fremont. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, thanks, Sal. Also helpful. It's great to hear from, from everyone to hear your thoughts about locations. So let's go to Robert Evans, Bob Evans next. And if you could just quick unmute. Perfect.
Yeah, it took me a while to find my mouse. If you're thinking about catering to the visitors, then you probably ought to think about where does the, the trolley go? And that may give you a little more focus about where to put them in the New Monterey area at least.
Great. That's, that's a good suggestion. That's a new, new one. We haven't heard specifically yet. So that's that's helpful. Thank you, Robert.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Bob. And before Robert Roach speaks, he's the next one up. Also, Robert, if you, Robert Roach, if you could also address from your industry side, what do you think is, is a, is a appropriate process? Do you want a competitive bidding process? Do you want an RFP process? From your experience, what, what, what makes the greatest sense for, for you? And also, what, how would you look at saturation as well? We heard the number three right now. You being the executive director of an industry organization. How would you respond to that question about number of permits as well?
Well, our organization really hasn't taken that position on that. So I don't want to give my opinion without some, some thought. So I'm going to think about that. And it will be getting back to you with some feedback on the process, because, I mean, that's a very difficult question. And each, it really takes some thought and some consideration, because each, each way you go has some advantages and disadvantages, you know, same with social equity. You know, it's, it's hard to, no one's really found the sweet spot on that either. It's very difficult to come up with, with an answer to that one. And I want to speak to the tourism question, because I've been interested in kind of tourism. I found there's a California Cannabis Tourism Association. And I would suggest that you get in touch with them and look at some of the information that they can provide. I think this area has great potential based on what I've learned from them. And then obviously you want to have access to, to the, to the dispensaries by the people to come visit our area. And I love the idea of thinking where the trolley goes. So obviously it needs to be in places where the visitors can access it. The city of Palm Desert went so far as to craft an ordinance that allows it to be sold right in the hotels. I'm not suggesting that's right for, for you. But certainly you think about kind of tourism, as cannabis continues to be normalized. And I think that process is going to accelerate very quickly. I think we'll see decriminalization at the federal level. I think we'll see other states becoming more tolerant. So did I answer your first question sufficiently for now?
Yeah, thank you so much. And I had no clue that there is a California Cannabis Tourism Association. So it's probably, and when you talk about the trolley, it's probably like the wine trolley, you know? Again, I was, I'm just joking here, but, but thank you for that information, Robert. And of course, I respect that you cannot speak for your association with respect to the number of permits, et cetera.
Right. Thanks, Robert. Let's see, we don't have anyone else with raised hands, but we do have a couple of questions and comments. One anonymous attendee wrote, locations that are walkable for residents make it easily accessible to the locals of the Lighthouse neighborhood in downtown. So thank you, anonymous person for your comment. That anonymous person also has a question. If a dispensary was placed in downtown Monterey, how often do the police department patrol that area? Could they step up patrols at no additional cost? Chief Hoover.
Thank you, Nat. Dave Hoover, chief of police. The way I would answer that is, is we're not going to look specifically at what the business is there. We do have a zero-sum game. We have a certain amount of police officers and it's kind of like an emergency room. We triage what's going on. We try to have the sweet spot of, kind of like what you guys are just talking about with the number of police officers, so that we can answer different calls for service. And when they're not doing that, they are actively patrolling around in different areas. So we would continue with those patrols, no matter kind of what's going on. And, and so that, that's how I'd answer that. Our patrols would stay the same.
Thank you. We answered that one. All right. No other, no other comments? I don't know, Hans, do you have other questions we'd like to ask the group or how are we doing?
Yeah, if, I would like to maybe ask if, if there are no other folks chiming in right now. I'd like to ask Aram and Sal and Geronico about, John Rico, about the preference about first come, first served or a competitive RFP process? What, what, what do you think works in your humble opinion?
Yeah, let's see if, if they can raise their hands, if they are able to chime in or would like to. Sal is the first one up. Sal.
Thank you, Nat. Thank you, Hans. You know, every process that I've been through thus far has been a competitive process. I guess the pros and cons of that are you get a really good understanding of who the potential operators are. It's a very rigorous underwriting process. The, you know, negative side of that coin is that it can often be a very lengthy process. And which could follow with lawsuits and all kinds of other things that, you know, might not come about if it's a first come, first served. I don't know that there's necessarily a right answer to the question. I think that if it is a first come, first served process, that the bar needs to be set very high as far as minimum requirements for applications to meet in order to qualify to even be in the running for, for a first come, first served process.
Thank you.
Okay, let's hear from John Rico in response to our question.
I was, I was actually about to say pretty much the same thing that Sal said. I mean, it's, I've, I've kind of helped out different people with projects over the years, the past recent years, since it became recreational. And I've seen the lottery processes. I've seen the, I really actually haven't really seen a first come, first served process done yet. I have seen the competitive process with the application. I, I think that, I think that it is important that you guys are able to, you know, understand the business that is getting offered to the community there before just, you know, oh, it's the first guy that came and offered a plan. You know, I mean, I, I mean, I would love to be like a first person in a situation where it's first come, first served. But again, I would also want to make sure that the, that, you know, that all of the people involved from the city all know a bit more about the project, a bit more about what the business is gonna, you know, Um, a bit more about the project, a bit more about what the business is gonna, you know, offer to the community, so. Um, I think that there does probably need to be some type of process where um. The city is able to take a look at it and maybe put a few um requirements in place, like. Pretty much exactly what Sal said. I mean, there should be some some requirements in place, so that way. An applicant or uh, you know, an applicant meets those before you. Make the decision on, you know, hey, let's move forward on putting this place here, you know? So so that way you don't just end up with, you know, first come, first serve, I think is a little. It's it could be a little risky, you know, I mean, um, but at the same time, I know. You know, people who are really serious about it and really interested, and they've probably reached out to you guys already. Um, I'm sure that they may appreciate a first come, first serve situation, but I think it is important again that you guys um. Are able to understand the project um and and if, you know, the projects that are offered to you before you actually. Just jump on a project, you know?
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you. Okay, uh, let's go back to Aram.
Hi, thanks. Yeah, another great question. Um, and I agree with with, you know, you know, both guys that just spoke. Um. You know, I I'd be careful for one, you know, I what I've seen is a lot of times cities will will employ. Um, you know, consulting services that that kind of help draft your ordinance and. And do that kind of thing, and for the most part, they're, they seem a little outdated as as the industry moves forward. Um, a- as you're considering several different zones, too, I think you'll you'll probably have an opportunity to uh sort of. Cluster applicants kind of by the zones if if you're looking at the new Monterey zone versus. You know, old Monterey versus either North Fremont or or Ryan Ranch, you're you're going to have. You know, different applicants and and like your zoning is going to really. Kind of dictate how many applicants you have and how many buildings are available, right? And so. Um, you know, first come, first serve, actually, unincorporated Monterey County is is a first come, first serve, but they. You know, there there were some changes during the process that that weren't really uh favorable, in my opinion, but. For the most part, if you found a building that that was in the proper zoning, uh, you know, no one else was applying near you, then it was a a first come, first serve. If you're. You know, if you had a competitor in that same area, then it was kind of merit based, but. But also, as as you're building your ordinance, you know, look at other things that. You know, Pacific Grove just kind of went through their debacle, if you will, and I was an applicant there, one of one of five that that had applied. And uh, you know, look, we all know what happened to PG, right? They they took the opposite approach of what you guys are taking, didn't involve the community. Just kind of went forward on their own and uh and the community spoke out uh ag- against that, but as far as the the application process. Um, you know, they they wanted to do things like impose a, uh, you know, a five to seven percent. Uh, fee of gross sales. Well, five to seven percent fee of gross sales i- equals over fifty percent of our our net profits, right? So, you know, really understanding the businesses and and what we do. But but again, I'm getting off track a little bit, but as far as the application process and. And it being first come, first serve or merit based, uh, you know, I I like what Sal said in his comments, you know, you really got to consider the applicant. Uh, merit based is a great way to go. Learn about your operators, learn about what they've done for their community already. Uh, again, PG put a huge emphasis on community benefits and and what we can do for the city. Um, I'd just like to say that the Monterey County didn't do that, and and if you were to look at what I've done for my community. You know, that, you know, I don't look for, you know, accolades or or try to, you know, say, hey, look what, look what we've done, look who we've donated to, but we do a lot for our community and and. You know, I think, you know, maybe through the interview process, you'll get through some of that, but. But being careful and making that a requirement and and again, allowing these businesses to to have a a chance to prosper, but. First come, first serve is, I think, a little probably sketchy from the city's point of view. Um, and and really just finding a way to do your due diligence on the people applying. Uh, and if that's merit based, that then that's what it is. Um, and I think, you know, you know, Sal's a great operator. I I know that, and. You know, I know I'm a great operator. I'm sure there's other operators listening that aren't chiming in, but um, you know, you'll, your Monterey is going to be. Uh, you know, these licenses are going to be highly coveted, and I think you're going to have a lot to choose from, so. Anyway, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thanks for that.
Around be before we go to Sarah's question, um, I want to post one more question to to. To the group and potentially also to the retailers uh listening today. Uh. Our first uh uh contributor today, she spoke also about medicinal cannabis. Um, and you hear that also sometimes from the elected officials that uh they understand and value the. The uh the purpose of medicinal cannabis, however. From from the data that I see medicinal cannabis is just nine percent of the overall commercial retail market. Uh, so um, what's your opinion about just going for a medicinal cannabis dispensary? What what what? And it it's uh, it helps me just to get a quick statement there from you because I think. Um, the data probably will tell me that it's not worth it, but I just want to hear what you see as operators.
Very good question from Hans, and John Rico had his hand raised. I think he wanted to ask something else about the prior topic, too, so if you could address both. We would appreciate your feedback, John Rico.
Um. Okay, um, as far as on the medicinal part of it, I think what the issue may be on the medicinal part of it, because. A lot of people didn't choose, I mean, once it became recreational, there's a lot of people who had. Um, medical recommendations that just chose not to go and get and renew their their recommendations with doctors, so. They just, you know, they just chose to become a part of the recreational market. Um, I mean, I'm sure that that percentage is is not, I, you know, I'm sure there's a a larger percentage of the people that use cannabis that are using it for medical use. Um, but I do think that it is important to have more of a medical element to it. Um, I do want to say that a lot of dispensaries and stuff that are in existence right now. Um, you know, I'm not speaking of any of them in particular, but they have kind of lost the 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 focus of actually. You know, um, educating uh people about, you know, the medicinal uses, how they can benefit medically from it. Um, and so I think it is important that it does definitely have a medical element to it. Um, as far as just opening up a medical dispensary only, um, if you're looking for revenue into the city, that probably won't necessarily work out. Um, that well, um, but I do think that it is important that uh the centers that do open in Monterey, that they do have a strong emphasis. On the medical side of it, um, that they do offer programs and services that are. Um, you know, beneficial to the medical community and not just, uh, you know, not just a a recreational situation. Um, so that's that's kind of my comment on that. Um, I I wanted to say before, real quick, sorry, and then you can go back, but that the application process. Um, there was a gentleman that said that some cities have and counties have gone to an outside agency to do the application process. And I definitely want to recommend that you guys don't do that. Um, the reasoning why, to me, is because. I've dealt with some experiences where the same agency that basically is hired by the city or the county to. Give the licenses out are also offering business plans to applicants. So basically, if you pay for their business plan and their services, then you almost have a little leg up. On, you know, getting picked in that city because that agency is like, hey, you're already using our services. We're gonna, we're gonna prioritize that business. So I think it is important that we keep this in-house, that you guys down there, everybody keeps it. You know, the people of Monterey, you guys are are working very good at what you guys are doing right now, so. I think that it's important that the decision is made by you 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 guys as a group as a whole versus having an outside. A entity involved with that process, so I just wanted to say those two things, so.
Yeah, that's that's insightful. I know that's a topic we haven't really covered today, but uh. Good, good feedback there on about the uh. Working with a third party or not, so thanks. Thanks, John Rico. Uh, let's hear from Sal. Your thoughts on medicinal only?
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to speak on it. So um, that like the the previous speakers both alluded to, uh. You know, in in this day and age, since the state regulations have gone in place uh after Prop sixty-four back in two thousand eighteen. Uh, there's really a minor distinction between uh the medical products and what are deemed as recreational products. Um, and really, the main difference is that on the medical side, potency can be much higher, and the quantity that you can purchase can be much higher. Uh, the overwhelming majority of the customers that we see at our locations are coming in for some sort of medical ailment, um, but they're. Able to get the same product, the same medicine, without going through the annual exercise and um. Uh, of having to go out and both through go through the trouble of securing the medical card and paying for the medical card. Um, so I think that the city would be selling itself short on tax revenue, and I think it would be very difficult for uh an operator to. Survive as medical only, uh, when, yeah, a customer could simply cross Canyon Delray Boulevard and um. Be able to purchase exactly what they want without having to go through the trouble of of getting a medical card on an annual basis. Um, I'd also like to echo the last speaker's sentiment about uh using a third-party company um for the application underwriting process. Um, I've dealt with multiple and multiple different municipalities, and it seems like they really take a one-size-fits-all um approach to the application process. And all the cities and counties they work with, when in reality, and as you all know, there's a lot of nuance, city by city. That uh they they fail to take into account, so I think that the city is doing a fantastic job with the process so far. I think that'll continue, um. And I I honestly think that that the city isn't completely under control and doesn't need to. Go to the expense of of hiring an outside third party.
Good, good feedback. Thanks, Sal. Uh, let's go to Aram.
Yeah, yeah, actually, you know, I, Sal and John Rico, they they both said it perfectly, really. Uh, there's not much more I can add add to that. Um, you know, I'll just echo again what what Sal just echoed from John Rico, the about the third party. Uh, you know, coming in with your application process, you you guys have the the knowledge and the tools and. And really, the the available resources to reach out to to develop a a good plan yourself. It's it's not, uh. You know, drafted by somebody else, and and then as far as the medical goes, again, Sal, Sal, they both said it perfectly, uh. You know, more than half our customers come in that are coming in for medical reasons, but they do avoid. You know, having the annual, you know, fees that are associated with a medical card. Um, and and there's really no difference in the products, so. I'll just, that's all I got. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, thanks, Aram. We have a question, uh, or a comment and a question from Sarah. I wanted to ask again about the potential for other cannabis-related businesses, such as growth facilities and processing plants. As part of a conglomerate that owns multiple businesses within the cannabis industry and a hopeful. Potential applicant. I know there are many avenues for city revenue within the industry. Form a revenue-based standpoint, or I think, as you meant, from a revenue-based standpoint, have you considered these options? As far as first come, first serve, the highest caliber applicants should be considered. For whom will be best for the city of Monterey and its residents. Thank you for your time. I'd like to throw my hat in the ring as a potential applicant. Hans, uh, would you like to respond to that?
Yes, uh, thank you, Sarah, for the question. Um, yes, we 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 are looking at all options. Uh, as you know, we have a testing. Facility out in uh Ryan Ranch that was permitted by the city, and uh. I'm not quite sure if it has yet uh received the state of uh the required state permits. So we we are looking at all options, including manufacturing and uh. Um, uh, I don't, I don't think we have the space for cultivation that you have in 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 other areas of the county. Uh, but um, everything right now is something that 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 we are looking at. Of course, we have to um. Uh, we have to, what's the term I'm looking for? Of course, it's easy to see that commercial retail is is probably. Um, uh, an area we will focus on. Also, uh, delivery services is probably another one. Um, manufacturing definitely is something also that that brings its own uh advantages and disadvantages. So for right now, everything is is on the table. The council has indicated they are looking uh a little bit more closer to uh to commercial retail and. Uh, delivery services, but they have not made up their mind. Now, the county of Monterey is very saturated with manufacturing. Um, uh, and also distribution businesses, so uh again, uh, the overall marketplace, Monterey County is um. Is also setting the pace for that, and last but not least, city of Monterey is a pretty land-restricted area. And uh with that also comes certain um economic factors that that we have to consider, but nothing has been. Uh, definitely excluded yet, although the preference is probably leaning towards uh testing. That we have already established and uh commercial retail as well as delivery. But uh again, Sarah, everything is on the table. And uh that's, that's it. Um, I I would uh suggest to Nat, uh, if there are no more questions, and I don't see any more questions. Uh, to 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 wrap it up as as we discussed, Nat.
Great. Um, thanks, Hans, and a reminder to all, first of all, thanks so much uh to all of you for participating and uh. And uh wanted to just quickly share uh with all of you. Hopefully, you can see the screen here. Um, where we have the cannabis uh information page on Have Your Say Monterey dot O R G. And here you can can read some more background information, put in your email address. We will email. Uh, you when we have updates. Uh, there's some key dates. Today's town hall, we have one on Thursday as well. And uh and more information, the roadmap is listed here, as well as if you click over here on survey, uh, this is where you can take. Uh, the survey on cannabis and uh click Take Survey, and you just have to log in and sign up for the site, and and then you'll be able to uh to. To take the survey, so again, that's at Have Your Say Monterey dot O R G. We've, we have over a hundred and thirty survey responses so far, so. Yeah. Participation, and that's it uh from from me and uh really on behalf of uh the city of Monterey team. Uh, and uh, Hans, thank you for being here uh today. We appreciate uh all of you and look forward to seeing those who can join us on Thursday evening at seven o'clock P M.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your help. Thank you.
Bye bye.